Bugging me.
Depending on how long it gets, I might go to Locks of Love and tell them they can have it.
You gotta wait to go, Howard.
Is Mary joining us tonight?
As far as I know.
She's supposed to be.
We need another one for Quorum, don't we?
Yeah, I was just looking at that. There's just five of us right now, isn't there, Tony?
Yes.
So we need a cell or Kara to show up.
Yep.
Mary said that she and Erin are trying to connect.
There's a cell.
Yeah, Cell just joined.
There she is.
There's Kara coming in. And then Erin Jones is coming in.
Hi guys.
I think I finally got let in. There we go.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Hi guys, sorry, we've had trouble.
Oh, good.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular school board meeting for May to order. Roll call, Howard, Alice, or Dave Russell.
Tony Beard sleep.
Kara Riley.
Mary, hi. A cell's on there, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're all on there.
I still got a cell.
Hi, so.
All right, we can bypass the pledge of allegiance comments from the public.
There are none.
All right. Has everybody had time to review the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes.
Nope.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept. With that said, I like entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as it is.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. Without any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. All right, moving on to new business, principal reports. Heather and Matt, I'll let you duke it out. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Um, so first, we had an eighth grader Melissa Holtby won first place in the regional science fair. She had to adapt her display on the Menace and Experiment she did to a virtual platform over the space of a couple of days when they moved from in-person to virtual. But she won first, so congratulations to Melissa. We started course requests last week through e-school. Yeah, and I've also sent new families forums to request courses. There will be 641 students on the 712 campus this year. That includes 103 juniors, 98 seniors. And currently, we have waitlists of 80 or more in grade seven through 10. All of my teachers have started thinking forward to next year and what that might look like. Teachers are considering the things that they like about this, and how they're going to incorporate those practices and techniques into their classrooms. All right, so that includes ways that they can continue or can physically distance kids in their classrooms if we have to do that, and what sanitation practices we need to put in place. Last week was teacher appreciation week, and my teachers had a great time playing the game of games, which was a game that we built relationships by completing silly tasks and sharing them with each other, as well as expressing our appreciation for each other or for parents or students that have made our lives better this year. I wanted to thank all the parents that donated prizes for that, as well as all of the parents and students who sent in their thank you notes. PTG is going to be hosting the online auction of items that are donated for CTA next week, which is Celebrate the Arts. We really encourage parents and community members to get online and bid next week if you can. That fundraiser directly impacts our programs, and it's used to pay for supplies, equipment repair, classes with master guest artists, things like that. So if you can get out and support us, do so. Where 30 seniors come by between the hours of 10:00 and 4:00 PM to get a free photo taken and all their graduation regalia and pick up diploma. That's about half of the graduating class. So it was nice for parents to get to see their kids all dressed up and and have their diploma and take a picture in front of the school. So I'll be sending those out to parents and students this week. And then AP testing started yesterday in a new digital online format. We've had about three kids take AP tests that way so far, and we'll have our bigger classes starting tomorrow. So that's been interesting, making sure they're ready for that and the way that the college has adapted to what we're doing right now. Are there any questions for me? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Heather. First of all, we did have our drive-through parade since our last meeting, and that was very successful. I don't know who it was better for, though, the teachers or for the kids, because we had missed seeing all the kids and most of them missed seeing us, too. So that was a great thing that we got to have. We are working on the plans for our kindergarten graduation. It will be a drive-through celebration, graduation. So we're working on the details of how we're gonna do that and, you know, making sure we get it measured off so that teacher can get close to the car, picture gets taken. That way, that part still remains. And then we plan on getting those kids together whenever that's possible. And I know Heather's had those same discussions about like with her seniors. You know, we want to get these groups of kids together and let them see each other, but we just can't predict when that will happen. Online learning is still a learning curve for us. We have found some students have really latched onto it and love it. We have found others that are not big fans and need more encouragement. And with everyone's families going through different themes right now, our counseling staff for both campuses have done an amazing job checking on kids and making sure we're meeting the needs of those kids. Because with most of these kids, it's not, I don't wanna, it's something's going on. And so I want to brag on all the counselors. We have been doing our school pickup of things left at the school. With, we've done fourth, fifth, and sixth grade now. Next week, we'll do first through third grade. It's amazing how many things were left at the school. What's even more amazing, I think the lost and found is growing instead of shrinking as people are coming. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but it's amazing. And then with our specials teachers, I did want to brag on them because they are providing opportunities for our students to keep participating in the arts. And so they're doing some great work there. And our PTA was in charge of our teacher appreciation last week, and they went to every home or every staff member and put a sign in the yard that identified that Arkansas Arts Academy superhero works here sign. And that was great, and that's quite the commitment, because we have people that live all over Northwest Arkansas. We also had a PTA Spirit Night at Tacos for Life. And so we had curbside drive-through pickup service all available, and it was an amazing turnout. I know the parking lot was full, so it was a great thing for our PTA and for the school. Any questions for me?
Is it me? Oh, can you guys hear me? Can you?
Yes, Mary.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, we're having trouble here at the office. Sorry, so the next thing is I need to ask you to vote on the meal prices need to go up to make ends meet next year. And then you'd go to $3.05 for the lunch and $2.00 for breakfast. So I need approval for the raises in the lunch. And that's the minimum, we didn't go more than what we had to.
Okay. So moved.
I made the first motion.
Okay, so moved, is that good? Second.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Howard's still muted.
Kara Riley. Second.
Who muted me? It wasn't me.
Sorry about that.
Mary, I'm sorry.
I might have done that earlier.
No, that's fair.
That's okay.
How much did we raise the meals by?
10 cents for lunch and 5 cents for breakfast.
Did you hear that? 10 cents for lunch and 5 cents for breakfast.
All right, I heard it. Okay, good deal.
Did you hear why? It's because the minimum wage went up on our cooks.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, so I heard a first and a second out there. I think Kara was the first. Does a cell the second? Okay, if there's no further discussion. Or Dave? Sorry. Without any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. We got the motion, the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. I'm beginning to think that-
On the next item, Howard is is sports, and I think, Tony, do you want to address that, or do you want me to talk about it?
Why don't you get started, then I'll follow up behind you.
Well, we tried this, I don't know, it's been two or three years since we said we have sports, but we thought they were going through the Rogers Activity Center, and they're not. And you guys voted to not put any of our own money in it, and the money has been going for the gas and the bus and different things. And after watching the high school climate, I think it has hurt the high school arts climate. I think at lunch, the kids are clicking for the first time and different things, and that's something we've always been heartfelt about not doing. And we've always promoted uniqueness and wanted to make quirky art kids feel comfortable, and some of them are not feeling comfortable. So I think we need to rope it back down to the archery and the bike, biking and cross-country or not cross-country. But I think especially the winter sports and different things have have hurt us, but at least at the high school level.
Yeah, and I think also that we got to remember what we are. We're an art school, and we need to make sure we're focusing on that. And I think any competition that needs to be happening needs to be around the arts. And we need to make sure we're integrating the arts into everything. And our charter says we're an art school, and we can't stray from that. And a big part of our funding is because we're an art school. And we can't, we can't stand to lose that. And I think it's time that we tried, it didn't work. It's time for us to go back to what, who we are. And I agree with you, Mary, that we all look at archery and biking. Open across country, but I really feel like it should just be archery and biking. Shouldn't be any time taken out of school for sports. It should all be around physical ed or a club-type sport, but no funding from the school. Just going back to the way we were originally and being in our true art school.
Well, I think it's put pressure on Heather, and Heather's a good sport. And I think for, it's hard for her or anybody that would be running the high school to not feel obligated to go to everything. And we just can't go to everything the way it is now. And I don't want anybody that works at the high school to have that kind of pressure of teachers or assistant principals or principals not only go to the art events, but when a student says, are you gonna come watch me play? That's a, that's a hard thing to swallow, to disappoint them. So I don't want them to have that pressure.
I just like said, I just think we need to refocus on who we are, and that's the arts. Anybody else have anything to say? Just curious how the other board members feel.
Can I say a few things on this?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Heather. I think a cell was trying to talk. Go ahead, a cell.
I was just going to say that I am in agreement and principle, you know how I felt before, and that hasn't changed. I am not sure about the cross-country if we, because it seems like that has been pretty popular and going well and has not been creating any issues, so I don't know. The issue with the cross-country, I guess, is new for me. But in general, what you're saying, I'm in agreement with the principles of what you're saying. I also think, I'm sorry, also another thing that we started doing is when we allow a student to practice the sport that they are already involved in, like the swimming. And I am, I'm fine with that. Just the team sports, I think I've always felt that they have been a little bit of a distraction.
All right, thanks, a cell. Matt, go ahead.
I just had a couple of things I want to share. So let me share my screen with you. Oh, never mind. I cannot share my screen. Can you allow me to share my screen, Beck?
Yeah, one moment.
All right.
Okay, Matt, try it now.
There you go.
All right, I think I'm good. Can you all see that?
Yep.
All right, perfect. So just kind of wanted to go over just some general information. First, around five years ago, a lot of us were not here then. But there was a problem. We were losing students after sixth and eighth grade. And some of those students cited the reason they were leaving as a lack of athletics. And the admin team at that time, when they did their squad analysis, found that the lack of athletics was a problem. Nothing that was addressed at that time, but it was a noted problem that we were losing kids to. Then, as some challenges were issued, we wanted to make sure we improved the facilities. And the board, you all have done an amazing job going there. And then moving towards national-level arts programs. It's definitely improved in the few years I've been here to see the student performances have grown greatly. And the other big challenge was to increase the student enrollment and have waiting lists, because our numbers were much lower at that time. Some of that is a direct complement to the work, because building the building is wonderful, but the work that Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Wright have done at the high school have helped increase that student enrollment and have waiting lists. Another thing that I do believe has helped that was the development of a school athletic program. Because we have many students that are participating in everything from archery, mountain biking, cross-country, soccer, basketball, and individual sports. One of you noted that we had a student that was a great swimmer, so we allowed him to participate, which allowed him to get all-state honors this year. The results of all these things, now we have waiting lists for all grades through 10th grade. There's been an increase the size of classes, seventh through 12. I know some of you believe that some of the students are, have some different issues, but what I have seen is some improved motivation of some students, because they know they have to have a certain grade point to be on the archery team, to be on the basketball team, to run. Whatever the event, they have to have a certain grade point. And to have people there checking those grade points is a big thing. And it also allows Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Wright to be able to contact coaches to help alleviate disciplinary issues. I think we've seen some school pride. You know, who kids sit with in the cafeteria is gonna be different everywhere. But as far as kids wearing Arkansas Arts Academy shirts, coming to ballgames and yelling with pride, being able to say, I represent this school, is a great game. And then there has been a decreased loss of students over this time. And all of this has been without a financial cost to the school district. We do have a booster club, so if the booster club needs to pay more for gas, that is something we're definitely willing to do so that students don't lose this opportunity. This year, we had 190 participants in all of our sports. Now, please know that number is participants, so that does not mean 190 individual students, because that's the way the Activity Association counts numbers. So for example, a participant can participate in more than one activity. But still, when we think of that number and our size school, that is a huge number. And when we see the diversity of those teams, we have, you know, 48 kids are on the archery team. And it is the only current athletic adventure we have that we actually have to cut kids, because the state will not allow us to have all the kids that have trotted out. Two of our archery teams actually qualified for national tournament this year, which due to COVID, they were unable to attend. We had three different students, actually four different students make all-state, two in archery, one in swimming, and one in cross-country. We did have one student that was named the MVP of a tournament. And we have seven current athletes that are being recruited by colleges in the area. And then, you know, we were issued a new challenge. You know, again, to get to that national-level art school. The board and superintendent lay have all made clear that we've got to get there. And how do we get there? And we need to be the ultimate K-12 choice for excellence in arts education. And, you know, as I soaked that in, that's when I realized I had really boxed everything, to be honest. I had thought of an athletic box, an arts box, an academic box. But that's not the way it is. I do believe that's the way things used to be, absolutely. But now, when we look, it's not the way the world is anymore. Look of all these athletes or artists, from football players to swimmers to tennis to basketball. All of these people are known for their athletic, but they are also artists. Everyone from Kobe Bryant to Serena Williams, amazing athletes who are also amazing artists. On the flip side, artists are also athletes. Sheryl Crow was an amazing track and tennis player. Kate Hudson with her soccer. Vanessa May went to the Olympics in skiing and is a world-class violinist. These, these athletes and these artists are combined. They're healthier for it, and they are more well-rounded because of it. And these are the students we are able to produce right now at Arkansas Arts Academy, students that have multiple interests. So we looked at some of the national-level schools. What do they do when it comes to athletics? Lusher down in New Orleans has a full complement of everything. A full arts program, it would be hard to find a fuller arts program. Their academics are amazing, and they have a more comprehensive athletic program than most schools around here do. Then we have a lot of art schools in the country that are what we call like a district-level school, where that means they're a magnet school or some kind of district charter. And what they do is similar to what Rogers New Tech does here. They allow students to participate in their zone schools for their sports. Now, the private schools, when we talk about national-level schools, most do not have athletic programs, and some did have individual sports options. So then we're like, how, what did we do? What is our best practice? Knowing these things, we have found a group that is willing to help us called Athletes in the Arts. This is a national organization, and their goal is to integrate the science of sports and the performing arts for the mutual benefits of both. When you look at the groups, and there's multiple more members of this groups, you know, it gives us all these tools, both in the arts world and in the sports world, to reach out and help these kids and give them these opportunities. And it gives us the chance to break down the walls that have developed over years and years between athletics and arts. Finally, I just wanted to share with you these kids. This is what it's all about. If the big worry is about taking away money and we need to raise more, fine. But don't take away this opportunity from these kids, because these kids deserve to have the opportunity to participate as an artist and as an athlete. Thank you.
Okay, so Matt, thank you for all the information. There's, there's a couple of things, and Tony, you can jump in here where you'd like to.
Sure.
Sure.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, and Matt, I'm not saying one side is right or the wrong. I'm just stating the facts of where we've come. We started, come from, excuse me. We started out as an art school, and our primary focus was how do we integrate arts into the teaching process? And through, through the years, we were able to form a very good and tight relationship with the Walton Family Foundation and Crystal Bridges. And arts just became a major focus. Again, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with athletics. I believe that we need to make sure that all of our kids or students are at least physically active in some form or fashion, whether that be through the arts or through the sports. But there's a couple of things that Mary did say along the way that, that I'm concerned about. We are fairly small. I don't know how we compare to Lusher and the number of students that they have and, and, you know, what their funding looks like, et cetera, et cetera. I do get concerned about cliques and, you know. Probably gonna stereotype here for a second, but usually where you have athletics involved, there's the, you know, "we're better than you" type attitude in some situations. And then it does get down to how we are actually gonna fund this. I don't know what the right balance is. And I'm not saying we don't need to have any sports programs. But I want to make sure we're focusing our efforts, our funding, and our real direction for where we're trying to head into those areas which are of the utmost importance to us. We talked about archery, we talked about biking, we talked about cross-country, we have swimming. Then we start getting into the more competitive sports like soccer, basketball, football. Who knows, are we gonna start talking about baseball? We have, we have a finite number of students, and for us to have to manage through all those sports programs seems like it's going to be problematic. This is just Howard speaking from a board standpoint. And I'm gonna stop there for a second. Tony, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I agree with that, with that, Howard. I just feel like we need to make sure we're focused on what we started out, you know, 20 years ago as an art school. And that we continue that, and I'm afraid that there's the, the sports are starting to cause a distraction. And we just need to get back to the roots of who we are. Yes, we, we have grown a lot, and we may lose some students over this, but we're an art school, and I just really feel like that's what we should be doing. That's, that's why a lot of our kids, the majority of our kids come, they don't come for the athletics. They may leave at sixth grade, eighth grade, as Matt said. But there's other schools that can go to, to get the athletics. I think we need to stay focused on the arts. And, you know, our major, some of our major funders are arts people. And I'm afraid that if we stray too far from being an art school, we could lose that. And I just don't want to take that chance. I think that we need to get back to who we are.
Can I, can I make a comment and ask a question?
Okay.
So Matt did mention that some of the schools in town let their kids participate in the, the programs, I guess at the regular public schools. And I guess my thought would be if we have a kid who really wants to go to our school for the art, but really wants to play a sport, why couldn't we manage it that way? Because, you know, I, I understand that we have lost kids. I know of kids that have transferred out of our schools because they want to play sports. But, you know, we have waitlists through 10th grade. And kids who are serious about sports don't leave in 11th grade. They, they leave in 7th grade, so they can get into junior high stuff. So I think the concern of losing students is, is probably overstated. You know, we have long waitlists of kids who want to come do art and who haven't found a home in the public schools in northwest Arkansas. And I think that our, our school frequently provides that home for those kids. And we don't need spots taken up by kids that are not particularly interested in arts and want to just come do sports. We need to save those spots for kids who are truly art students. There are ample ways to play sports in northwest Arkansas without it being school-based. There are, you know, elite soccer teams and all this, all this business, boys and girls clubs and ways to play sports. And I don't have anything against sports, but, you know, there are many schools in this area that, that can meet the needs of kids that want to play sports. There's not very many schools that can meet the kid, meet the needs of kids who want to focus on their art in, in every class. So that, that's my opinion. Thanks.
And if, if I, if I may add, we may, and I don't know if we haven't yet, but we may see students who would leave because of the less, the low, weaker emphasis on the art. And I really appreciate, Matt, I thought that that presentation was great, and you made a lot of really great points. But just from speaking, I know that our senior classes is the last class that, that still, that went through the whole gamut, you know, from the elementary school to the portables, to the, you know, new, old school and the new school. And I have heard not just from my son, but from, from a number of them, that they miss the way that the school was when it was more arts-oriented, and it was, so it's changed. And when we have actually lost, I know that them students, I don't think it's specifically because of the athletics, but because of the change in the environment. And as many great things that the athletics have added to the school, I mean, it hasn't helped our ranking. And again, I don't know, that's, that's growing, that's a growing pain, but it, it maybe, I don't know if it's not a factor, if it's not part of it, for sure. And, you know, you also, Matt, said that those athletes who are artists and other way around. But don't forget that artists are athletes without having, you know, to do something else. Dancers are athletes, and, you know, they are probably stronger athletically than many other, you know, sports figures. So we do have that opportunity. And I mean, the school where my daughter went, you had to do dance. I mean, if you wanted to do, and that was a really, you know, it was really arts, you know, very heavily art-oriented school. And they are in our number two in Georgia. But they, you know, you want to go to our school, you have to take dance. That, there's no other option, that's your PE. So, I mean, I don't think that we need to be going that far, but there's something to it to giving appropriate respect to the dance, to the art form that we are providing. So, I don't know, I don't think that team sport is our, is on, is on, is on brand for us. Unfortunately, that's how I feel. And I think it is hurting some students.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
As far as our charter goes, we were chartered to be an art school. And everything that we've done to develop the school has been along those lines. And working towards national focus, you know, I think we're doing a good job of doing that. I think Mary's done a wonderful job of guiding the school towards that status of, of national recognition. I worry that if we try to expend resources in too many different directions at the same time, that we're going to lose focus in what we do best. And I think that at this particular point in time, particularly with the fact that we are expanding the way we are, we have the new programs in the arts and things like that that we have. And all of the changes that are currently going on around all of those things, you know, I think that diverging from that focus at this point would be a mistake for us. So I have to say that I can concur, concur with not doing the sports, at least not at this particular point in time. There may be a point in time where we come back and revisit it.
Also, the board already voted on it. Prior, prior, sorry to bring it up.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, so I think all the board members have spoken. I, I guess, do I need, do I need to go down through the list of, of sports and decide which ones we keep and which ones we phase out? Or how do we want to handle this?
I'd like to, I'd like to propose we go back to what was working really well. But you don't have to do that, but, but my proposal, if I had my choice, would be is to go back to the mountain biking, which is part of our major PE program. And so more of a club, the archery, which is run through the state game, and is, is ran through PE classes also. And I, I think cross-country has helped a lot of individual, quirky kids have some good mental health. And, and it's a lifetime skill, and it doesn't draw lots of, doesn't pull attention away from where parents come in groups and, and are competing against other parents from other schools and so forth. So that would be my druthers, but, you know, it's up to you.
So what about, Mary, what about the participating in individual sports?
Oh, I think that's fine, like the swimming, because they do that at a club. All they have to do is register, I think that's great.
And they can still get PE. Is there a point that they should get PE in our school? Like, is, are we okay with that, or is it not a consideration?
Well, it, it needs just to be a club or, you know, like the swimmer was in a swim club. Same club my son swam in and then competed for Bentonville. It's the same club, so I think that's great.
So about, sorry, I don't know that, but do dancers get PE credit for, for, for dance classes? Or do they have to take PE separately?
It, it's a credit.
They get PE credit for dance.
Okay, but thank you, thank you for clarifying. I think it's great.
So do we let the kids that do mountain biking and archery, is that their PE?
Yes.
Okay, so are we gonna let kids who do outside clubs, like, count that towards their PE?
I don't know, can we, Heather?
Mary, I want to qualify. Students do not PE credit for archery at high school, because it's not run.
Oh, that's right, it's elementary, my apology.
The kids who are on the mountain biking team aren't given PE credit for their mountain team experience. They can take a mountain biking class as PE credit during the day.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that to mean that if they're in an outside club, per se, swimming, they are still gonna be required to take a PE class, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I don't care.
Yeah, that's fine, exactly, I agree.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out there to the board. The, the proposal is to keep archery, mountain biking, and cross-country and individual club sports. Is that a true statement?
Do we even have to stay individual club sports since they're done outside of the school completely? I'm just asking.
Is it done after school hours?
I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
I just think, you know, maybe we should, maybe we should throw the clubs out. I don't know.
Because I assume that they were getting PE credit, that's why we're announcing it. Otherwise, we cannot prohibit, I mean, our students can go to anything outside of the school. Yes, then they can do anything outside of the school, right? We can prohibit them, it's not up to us.
But I just meant the mountain biking thing, it's not, it's a, I don't know, what do you call it, Heather? Is it a club or a organization?
Are you talking about NICA? Are you talking about?
What would you call it?
It's an, it's an organization, so sort of like the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission runs the archery tournaments. NICA runs the mountain biking tournaments.
Okay.
Kids who are on the team aren't, I mean, I don't classify that as PE, it's not built into their schedule.
Would that prohibit?
Then I'm sorry, but then I need to ask, then why wouldn't we added, why was this such a big deal that we've added swimming? Like, was it done during?
Swimming's not a big deal, it's the basketball and the soccer.
I understand, no, but when it was announced, it was announced like, oh, like we're adding swimming or, so was the student able to do it during school, or was it just?
We, we sponsored.
Really add swimming.
We sponsored Gavin Lindley so that he could compete in the state swimming tournaments. And Danilo Blenkin and several other swimmers who swim with clubs so that they could compete in the state tournaments.
What does it mean, sponsored?
Sponsored by a school. Well, because if they're, if they're just swimming with the sharks.
Oh, I hear.
Part of the, the state tournament, right, Matt? Do I have that right?
All right, that, the individual sports allows, like if we have a golfer who comes to our school and likes to golf on the side, if we allow that, he can go to a golf tournament, he can get All-State honors, those type of things. So that would be the individual sport part.
And then he just flies under our banner at that point, is that what that is?
That's what it is, and it means that.
I'm good with allow.
Sorry, what were you gonna say?
It does mean that someone at the school will sign up with AAA. We watch the rules presentation, and that way he is able to participate. He or she.
And this year was a, in, in an individual sport, but it can become a team sport with the numbers. So just wanted to clarify that.
So can we put in verbiage that says we are willing to sponsor people who want to, you know, compete in individual sports and put our name on them? Is that, is that an acceptable way to deal with the situation?
Yeah, did David, excuse me, I'm sorry. David, did you say that they, they could become a team sport when the numbers get to a certain size? Is that what you said?
Yes. And how really teams can compete at, have, you know, compete as a team. And I was the one that went in and did the certification for our swimmers and attended the swim meets, because anytime a student is participating in an Arkansas Activity Association event, a school personnel needs to be there. And I attended the cross-country meets, I attended the basketball games, and, and the swim meets. And I think there was only one day that Gavin missed a couple of hours of school for a swimming event. And I think that's right. I think when we went to the conference meet in Clarksville was the only day.
But there's nothing that, yet, there's nothing that stops them from going to those clubs on an individual base, basis of being sponsored through the clubs.
That's true, he does that. And he'll compete during the summer with, with those clubs. But other members of, of his club is competing for Rogers and Bentonville at the high school level. And, you know, that's the push from, that, from our, from our kids to compete, make it a high school, a school event rather than a club event.
But the minute we turn it into a sponsored event, then we have to make sure that we have somebody on staff that goes through that process and has to be at each one of the events. True statement?
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the board and say, I, I think part of our problem was we were. I I think part of our problem was we were becoming too fragmented with all the things that we were having to participate in from a staff standpoint. So is that something that we want to continue sponsoring, knowing that we'll have to have staff at each one of these individual clubs if we decide that we're going to go sponsor this?
I would say that that has to be, or that can be addressed on individual, on case by case basis. As opposed to just blank allowing everybody who wants to do it to do it. If somebody wants to do it, they can go through a process, apply and see if there there's somebody at school who would do that and what do you think about that?
I would be fine with that. My only, the only concern is that when we have to make sure that we don't exceed a number of we get multiple students in that club that want to be sponsored.
I agree.
That swimming is a huge commitment. I mean, it's, it's every night. It's a drive to the pool. It's it costs parents money to be involved in. I I don't see us worrying about too many kids. I think it's a rarity to have a a Lindley young man. And and I think what Sal said is a great idea, but that it, they just will come along once in a while because not too many kids have that two, three hour a night swim four thousand meter commitment. So I think it won't happen very often. That's just my guess.
Alright. So I am going to add to this or subtract to it after I say it. I'm going to entertain a motion to continue on with archery, mountain biking and cross country as as sponsored athletic programs for Arkansas Arts Academy. We will address individual club sports on a case by case basis. Need to figure out how we back out our basketball, football and soccer. Is that what I heard?
Yep, I think that's correct.
But are we only talking about high school, right? Or are we talking about?
We're talking across all all campuses, I believe.
Sports at the K six level.
Yeah. Policies.
The sports at the K six level are not.
Okay, they're not. Okay. Gotcha. That makes sense.
Okay, but as as a, as a school institution, Arkansas Arts Academy, our focus is primarily on archery, mountain biking, cross country and sponsored approved club events.
That sounds good.
Alright, that's the motion on the table.
I'll make the motion, the first.
Tony, Kara's second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries.
The next thing is A P R C has done a wonderful job with funding from their top man, which is Ken Rich and to their second command, which is Kathy Hamlin and somebody they've assigned just to our school, which is Bonnie Cole. And I call them the three finance years or financial year, year, something like that. Anyway, they are willing to continue to manage our finances and work with the state on our behalf for forty five thousand a year. That that includes not, we don't have to pay retirement. We don't have to pay insurance. We don't have to pay anything but the forty five thousand. That's a wonderful thing and and I just need your approval.
Do we have to, do we still have to do anything on our end?
Just approve it, just the contract.
I meant as far as finances are concerned. I'm assuming we still have.
Yes, we already have people doing that here now. Terry Harrell directly works with them. Debbie directly works with them. I directly work with them. The three of us kind of congregate every morning what the needs are and and we work with Bonnie and then I work directly with Ken. So we have a team really going well here and not one person so that everybody knows what to do in case somebody's not here, which is great.
Alright, and we still prepare the financial reports every month?
No, they do. They do all of it.
So they'll have those done before the board meetings?
Right, they did this one, just they they're getting it on time now, everything. They manage the money for everything. It's great.
So just from an operational standpoint, before we vote on this, I I know we are going to give more ownership in the budget to both the high school and to the elementary campus.
Right.
Do we need? Do the, do the financial reports need to be broken out such that we view the high school and the elementary? Or do we still review them as combined?
No, we need to do it as a district and then they are going to get their activity money to them this week and they will have their own budgets next year, which they haven't had. And I like what they want to do for teachers next year. You know, each teacher in the elementary gets five hundred dollars to spend for supplies and that's always been a pain because every little thing, whether it's ten dollars or twenty dollars is.
My frozen or is Mary frozen?
Mary's froze.
I'm, I think Cox has a problem in this area of town. I think that's what's going on. Foster. Um. I I guess, I don't know who's left on the phone that can answer my question. So from a financial standpoint, who who is governing or overseeing our our budget and what's being spent and when we have to either curtail spending to make sure that we meet the the end of the year? If that makes sense.
Howard, this is Terry Harold. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Since Mary's frozen, I think I can answer your question. I will try to. A P S R C would be in charge of that. They are in charge of the budgets. They're in charge of all of what a CPA like when we had Natalie aboard. They are doing all of that. What we are doing on our end is like I am uploading all of our financial bills to them to be paid along with the others in the office and stuff and then they
Okay.
correlate with Mary on financial decisions. So does that answer your question as far as who's doing all of the budgets and all of that?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure who is providing general oversight to make sure that we weren't overspending in any category so that we get to the end.
Yeah.
All of a sudden we have a problem.
So I, yeah, this is Tony. I just got a phone call from Mary. They've lost power at the office. So I've got her on my phone. Mary, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear.
Can y'all hear?
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll just hold it up to the mic and we'll go from there.
So I know Terry, I know Terry's already answered the question, but Mary, my question was is who is going to provide general oversight from month to month on the budget to make sure that we're not going to have a problem at the end of the year? And be able to adjust accordingly throughout the year.
It will still be, it will still be A P S R C. They they're, you know, they're all CPAs. That's their job to oversee it and you can change it at any time. I just wanted the new person not to have to worry about it when they started so they can get acquainted with everything. They're doing great. They they have got us in the black and you know, we were worried, so they they're real strict advisors. They're not going to let us screw up on anything.
And do we, there's not going to be any problem there from an auditing standpoint?
No, uh-uh, no. And the one reason they're they're inexpensive doesn't mean they're not fabulous. It means that the Walton Foundation helps support it and that's, that's just why we can afford it.
Alright, does anybody else have any questions about the contract with A P S R C?
Yeah, Howard, our board secretary should be paying attention to it as well.
What we do, don't, 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 and we call, we conference call with him every day, almost ten times a day we're on the phone with him. So it's not them just running it. It's them advising with it.
Alright, I I just want, I again, I just want to make sure that we don't end it, end up in a problem at the end of the year. We have to figure out what to do.
No, we're healthier than we ever have been. They even teach us while we go like this is why you can do this. This is why you can't do that. They understand all the laws, all the changes in the laws. They're there at the 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 state house when they do all the negotiations for new policies. And they'll say this changed, you need to know that. No, you can't do this, Mary. It's really been a blessing.
I I just don't want to, I know we have, I know we're secure for a while. I just don't want to be drunken sailors.
You can change it anytime. Like if the new person you hire is real financial savvy and wants to do it all on their own and you feel good about it, then then you can drop it, but I want to keep them going right now.
We're going to try and keep you.
We'll never be able to afford a CPA with a level of educational intelligence.
Oh, looks like she's back. There you go.
We're on a phone doing it.
Um, yeah. It was one of the comments I was going to make. Yeah, so what they might want to do through this whole process is that they have operational procedures that they can help us put in place. So when we do get to the point, there's an easy transition that it's well documented as to what needs to happen. Alright, but with all that said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the financial contract between Arkansas Arts Academy and A P S R C.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Do I have enough here? Did Kara drop off?
Sorry, I was muted. I said aye.
Alright, all those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries.
Okay, I'm going to turn the phone over to, we're using the phone to Aaron so he can talk about the latest on the search committee. I think he got back.
Aaron, are you muted?
We may have lost them again.
I'm in. Sorry, we had, we had lots of things kind of coming in. I had a couple of images that I wanted to kind of throw out first simply because we had a couple of wonderful things with COVID nineteen going on. But I'll I'll save those. We have a high school senior that is doing this amazing mural. We had a business who wanted to have our fine arts students at the high school do some business for them. COVID broke out. We weren't able to kind of go there. This was a small business. They were going to be affected by not having any, any business at all. And this young lady kind of stepped up and kind of has done this outdoor mural to help with business and it's improved by bringing things in. Her name is Gentry Dillinger. And it's just kind of a phenomenal story and I had a picture of of the process of our mural going on. I wanted to kind of shout out to one of our students who's doing something like that. We also have a program, Adopt a Frontliner through New York City. And we have had some teachers and Mrs. Willard's third grade class that have gone above and beyond by sending cards to frontliners. This is everyone in the medical field in the hotspot of New York City who are just working around the clock. And these frontliners are just overwhelmed and overjoyed with our kids and teachers responding to this. So much so that the director called me today and wanted to know if they could use some of the artwork and cards that our school has done. So I wanted you to be kind of aware of that. I was very, very proud. So on to the bullet about the Arts Consulting Group. A little update of what's going on. This is the firm that we've contracted with for the search for Mary's replacement as a CEO superintendent. We have a search committee, which is Mary Lay, school board members, Howard Alstorf, Tony Beardsley, Dr. Kara Riley. We also have two individuals from the University of Arkansas, Dr. Denise Arola, who's the Director of Innovation for Education and Gary, sorry, Jerry Snyder, who's the Executive Director of the School of Art. They're on the search committee as well. Kim Davis with the Walton Family Foundation, the Education Program Director will be joining us a little bit later as well as myself. So that's the search committee. Right now, the process is the position announcement is being completed. A C G, the Arts Consulting Group took information that we supplied. They actually created a wonderful announcement and it has gone in a couple of different drafts, two drafts of that team have already taken place. A third will probably hopefully be the final draft. Yesterday was the deadline for the second draft. I think everybody contributed their, their everything that they wanted to kind of say about what what might need to be clarified. So I'm hoping that tomorrow, we have that third draft tomorrow to be decided upon and hopefully it's all agreed. And then the search committee will then have this announcement that be launched to a public search and begin the recruitment process. Following that, May to June, the Arts Consulting Group then begins the candidate interviews and research on top candidates to present to the search committee. June is hopefully our first round of interviews and candidates. Late June, we have semifinalist interviews. And then July, we hopefully have onsite interviews with the search committee administrators, key staff, stakeholders. Going into August, we then hopefully have the finalists beginning transition to the new position. So that's the timeline for this, this group. I think we're all very, very positive with what they've done so far and we'll keep everybody updated. Any questions?
I would like to add one thing. I've worked, talked to them a couple of times on my own. I am very impressed with them. They really seem to be on top of things. They've asked the right questions and were able to answer our questions. So I think we've got the right, the right group to help us find the next Mary Lay. And what I, I don't know, people I saw right before the meeting, I got an email from them on comparing salaries. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at that or not. But as a search committee, we need to kind of decide the salary range. And we probably, they, she, the consulting group said they'd like to have something this week if possible. So if you haven't had a chance, if you could take a look at it now, it was sent via email shortly before the meeting. But basically what they did was they went out and looked at art schools around the country. They looked at districts in our area, charter schools and public schools. And then they also looked at other art foundations around our area. You see a wide range from about seventy thousand to three hundred thousand in those different groups. You look at what the art schools, charter schools, art schools like, for example, the Idaho Art School, their salary was a hundred and six thousand. The Arizona School of the Arts was a hundred and twenty four thousand. The Arts Base School in North Carolina was eighty one thousand. So there's a pretty wide range. Now then you look at some of the other, some of the arts organizations and you're looking at, you know, three hundred eighty thousand for the Walt Dart Center, different level, I think, though. So what I would like to be able to do as a board, let's kind of discuss what range we're thinking. Mary, your current salary is?
Hundred sixteen.
Hundred sixteen, that's what I thought. So I was thinking we should stay somewhere in that range. In looking at these numbers, I'm saying between a hundred and sixteen and a hundred and twenty five or a hundred and thirty. Does that sound, first, is that doable? I think it is with our current financial situation. What does the other board members think?
Hey, Tony.
Yes.
Is the group going to come back and give us any kind of recommendation? Is the group going to come back and give us any kind of recommendation of what we might need to, to ante up, to attract the kind of talent that we want to have?
I, I asked that, they said they don't normally do that, because most, most organizations have a budget set. And she was really looking for us to lead that, that's why she sent this document. Because I talked to her late yesterday, she sent this today, to kind of give us an idea, some guidance that way.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering from that standpoint, you know, if we go back and say, okay, hundred and sixteen to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and thirty, whatever we do. You know, is, is that going to be in the ballpark to get the kind of individual that we want, or are we like way out of the bracket, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, that, that, that is a tough question, and I think maybe that's, we, we should start, from what she said, we start with a range that we feel like we can afford, and then if we feel like we're not getting the candidates, then we may need to look to readdress that.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
I, I think your range is appropriate, Tony. You know, I was kind of looking at that attachment today, and I didn't really see if there were stats about whether these were similar sized schools in similar areas with the same cost of living. Was that there, and I didn't see it?
Right, she, no, there was not as far as cost of living goes, what she did say she was going to look at schools of similar size.
Yeah, that's important.
But not necessarily the cost of living index, you know, North or South Arkansas being cheaper than Chicago or maybe even Idaho.
And you want, you want people come for the passion too, and not make it so attractive that it's they have all the degrees and, and the money looks good, but not the passion, so. But like, Benville makes around two hundred and fifty thousand, but you got to remember, they have twenty thousand students, and we have a thousand, so I think what I make is pretty great, but I think that range you've talked about, like, if you had a PhD, somebody with lots of experience in the arts, and, and you need to go one twenty-five, that'd be great too, so. I think where you're talking about is right on the button too, and you, you don't want to get so gross with it that it turns off the teachers that make thirty-five thousand a year. You know.
Exactly, what surprised me when I looked at this, she had put down what the superintendent at Haas Hall makes, which is outrageous.
Yeah.
How, how are they making that much at Haas Hall? Isn't it a public school?
Yeah, me.
Okay.
So, do, are we in agreement that I get back with her and say a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty?
I'd say a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty-five, just because that sounds.
One fifteen to one twenty-five, okay, that sounds good to me. Because she was wanting that, so that when they published the document and started getting inquiries, they'd be able to say what the salary range was.
And if somebody's so fabulous and wants to, they can always negotiate, you know what I'm saying? They can always say, I really want the job, and we found this person's really great, but they won't come unless you pay them a hundred and thirty, then that's something to think about.
Right, exactly, I agree, and, and she did say to expect, if, if, to expect it to be published this week, and probably they will start getting inquiries mid-next week and the week after. We should know kind of how we're doing as far as interest.
Great, that's exciting.
Okay, well, do we need to, do anything as a board, Howard, to sit that, or are we good just to use that range as is?
We're good on that range, right.
Okay. I'll let her know. That's all I had.
I lost my agenda.
Well, the only thing that's next is, I am since publications, and I have one just to discuss. And you don't have to decide tonight by any means, but I'm, I'm really worried about the policy of not having a board member with the relationship on the staff. Because we've had, we may lose Mr. Hennicott, because his wife is a speech therapist, and a wonderful speech therapist, and they're not easy to get, and she's wonderful, and then the one Nate Fry's wife quit, so he could be on the board, and she was a lunch duty person, and amazing, and who, getting a lunch duty person is kind of a kneel down, pray and light candle situation, so we, we're going to lose her to have him. And I think these people are, are not running to support their spouses, I think they're running because they hear their spouses, and they're passionate about the school and want to help. And in a way, they're all parents anyway, so, and they can't vote on things that have to do with their spouse. The only problem is, if you change it now, poor Roger Miller, who wanted it in the worst way, wasn't allowed to run, because his wife works for us, so I don't know if that can be fixed now, but in the future, I, I think it might be worth revisiting. Because if somebody, I know you've had a bad experience in the past, but none of these people that are, are passionate about coming on are bad experiences of the future. And I think if they're bad, a, a board could always make a motion of some type, or, or ask them to leave or whatever, but I think it's limiting who, there's nobody else wanting these, these to be on the board, and these are really great candidates, so I'm just thinking it's something you might want to think about, I'm just giving that in.
So, my, my only comment on that would be, I don't necessarily mind having somebody that is on staff. Though, the disclaimer there is, is that when we get ready to vote on salaries that impact the spouse of a board member, then they have to recuse themselves, yes. But I, my preference would be that whoever is working for the school not be part of the administrative staff.
Agree, totally agree.
Because that was where our biggest issue came from.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know the history of it. But I, I hate that we might lose Mr. Hennicott, because his, his wife's the speech therapist, it's hard to get speech therapists, it's hard to get board members, and I think we lose on that. The policy help makes us lose on that.
I. I'll let the rest of the board speak, but as long.
I agree, and, and, and to be honest with you, I've been thinking about that since we made that decision. And I think maybe we were a little bit, because we were burned so badly in the past, we maybe went to the extreme with it. So I'm willing to, to re, you know, readdress that, re, you take another look at it. Simply because, yeah, I think that maybe we would be excluding some, some people that shouldn't be excluded.
And Mr. Miller could still run for next year, because there'll be openings next year.
But isn't his wife administrative staff?
No, it's next year, she's going to be an assistant to a Vic in technology.
Okay, well then, that's fine.
But this year, yes, you're right.
Alright, so, who wants to draft the policy? Mary?
I, I would just, I could draft it for next meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then I don't know if you need to go in executive session to accept my letter of resignation. And as, and then what I would like for you to think about, it doesn't have to be two months or three months, I'm going to rent something or live somewhere for three months through August, but I'm willing to stay, every day you need me, until the person's comfortable or been transitioned, or you find the right person. What you could do instead of paying me a three-month salary or something, or a new contract, you can just pay my daily rate until you want me to go, how's that? After June.
So, I, I guess the motion would be to accept your resignation to be finalized at the end of the recruiting process.
Right.
So that way we have the existing contract.
And then just pay my daily rate beyond that, because my contract ends in June, but you could.
Thirtieth, right.
Yeah, June thirtieth, so you could just pay me while my daily rate is, till I'm done.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say nay, nay.
I so wanted to say nay also, no, not good.
I do love you, I am having remorse.
Oh.
That, that job application looks so great, I wanted to apply.
We're not stopping you, Mary.
Exactly, we would definitely consider. A way to get a raise.
Alright, eyes have it, motion carries.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Sorry, Mary.
Is there anything else I need to talk?
To be signed?
Uh, no, pretty soon though, this week.
Well, just tell me, and I'll drag myself up there to the office and you'll pick them up.
Okay.
Alright.
They're walking on.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion carries, thank you, everyone.
Alright.
Thank you.
We love you, Mary.
Bye.
Bye.